I missed the little warnings that was, "Do not touch."
That's okay. We love Frank.
All right, we're going to promptly call this meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to another in-person meeting of the Planning Board. It's good to be doing these again. We do have quorum. We have one member currently absent and one vacancy on the board, but we have enough to get started. To start out with, we will begin with the approval of the minutes. Does anyone have a chance to review and question, or do I have a motion?
Motion up for.
Second.
Comments? Prove the minutes? Very good. Minutes are in the record. Up next is public comments. We historically had observed these as part of the action agenda so that the commentary would be close to the item at hand. However, we've been advised, for legal reasons, we need to do this in this section of the published agenda. So, we have five speakers signed up. You'll each have three minutes at the podium. I ask you to state your name and address for the record, and also the item. We've got 21-16, 21-14, and two people that have not indicated. So, we'll just go top to bottom. We'll start out with Scott Barnett.
Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Barnett, and I own the property at 912 Beattie's Ford Road in Huntersville, right next door to this property, 2116. And I have concerns, but I think they've been addressed. They said that it'd be on the maps that y'all get tonight, and I hadn't seen them yet. But, the parking lot kind of surrounds two sides of my property. And I know there was going 20-foot buffer, but I thought we needed a fence, because it's going to be my property with all those, I'm surrounded by parking lots. And also, I was concerned with people cutting through. I have a U-shaped driveway, and with one part going all the way back to the back, and I was concerned with the people cutting through to get down to the store. But, my understanding is that they decided to put a fence up, which is great, and works for me. So, that's all I have. I think it'd be a great project for that area. There are other projects that they've done are really nice, and they take care of them. I mean, drive through any of them, and they look great. So, as long as we can get a fence, I'm good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Up next, we have Ty Schaefer.
Thanks. Ty Schaefer, Robinson Bradshaw. We represent the county. Mr. Smithberger also signed in. That was just in case the board had any questions or needed to hear from us when time came for that item on the agenda. So, nothing of public comment from us.
Very good. Thank you so much. So, we also have, like you said, Jeff Smithberger. We'll pass on that one now. Jimmy Royster?
I'm with the applicant, Jose Development Group, signed up as well, and had spoken with Mr. Barnett. And so, in the final version of the plan, we will be adding the fence he had asked about.
Very good. Thank you for that. And Andy Reid, Sandy Reid, I'm sorry.
I'm with the Urban Law. I'm just here if you have questions.
Very good. Thank you again. All right, well, that's everyone on the public comments, so we can move into the action agenda. Up first, item 4A, petition 21-16, a request by Mosaic Development Group.
Good evening. Brian Richards with the planning staff, and at this time, I'd like to submit my staff report to the record. As we've spoken, we're here for the Mosaic Senior Living Project down on Beattie's Ford Road. This is located on the southwest portion of town. As you can see here, the site is located in the area that is hatched. It is currently zoned rural. The applicants are asking for neighborhood residential, conditional district to allow for a senior living facility, or senior apartments. They're also voluntarily going to annex the property into the town if it gets approved. As you can see, to the east of the project is where the Oak Hill, Oak Grove Hill subdivision is currently being developed. And to the west, southwest, is where the future, or previously approved, Long Creek Retail, that's kind of sat dormant for a number of years, but actually recently, we've had a number of phone calls, so it may be revisited. Here's an aerial of the site. It is an older home and barn that is on the property. We've reached out to Stuart Gray at the Historic Landmark Commission, and they have no interest in giving it a historic designation. So, we've moved through that. Here's an illustrative view of the project. It's currently, it's zoned, I'm sorry, it's about 9.8 acres in size, zoned rural. Currently, it's neighborhood residential, I'm sorry, it's rural, and they're asking for neighborhood residential. The current use is a single-family home, which is vacant. They are asking for up to 130 multifamily age-restricted units. Currently on the plan, they're showing 123 units. So, that gives you an average of 12.5 units per acre. The maximum that this rezoning would allow is 13.2. As shown on the plan, it's 12.5. They are meeting all of our requirements for tree save. The existing site comprises of 6.37 acres of trees, which is 64% of the site. The requirement is 10%. They're offering to save 32%. There are 25 specimen trees on the site. They're offering to save 13, which exceeds our minimum requirements. They are asking for two modifications. One is a off-street parking reduction. As many of you're familiar with, ordinance requires number of parking spaces per unit. For every one-bedroom unit, we require one space. For every, every unit that has more than one bedroom, we require one and a half spaces. We worked with this applicant to provide us a study of all their other facilities in the area. They average just over, at their facilities, they average 1.25 units, or spaces per unit. That is a little bit higher than their actual utilization. They only have, if you look at all the units, they only have a half, just over a half cars, 0.6 cars per units. So, they've got a lot of empty spaces out there. So, they're asking for a reduction to go from, you know, down to one unit per parking space, or 1.02 per unit. And this is all explained in attachment F. We are in support of this. We've gone out and taken a look at our parking requirements for this type of use. Their study that they provided us was fantastic. We reached out to Charlotte. We've reached out to Davidson and Cornelius. All of them have lower parking requirements than us. Whatever our 2040 community plan looks for us to utilize flexibility and designs for certain uses, this falls right in that category. So, therefore, we're in support of the modification, number one, for a reduction of parking. The second modification that they're requesting is for side yard parking. Currently, apartment buildings do not allow parking in the side yard. With this site, it's a little bit different. The site falls off away from Beattie's Ford Road. Their parking would begin at a lower elevation than Beattie's Ford Road. It would be about five feet below surface. So, as you're driving along, you would not see many of the cars, possibly none, as vegetation and buffering matures. Because of those, the separation in grade, and the vegetation, staff's going to support. Modification number two. As you can see here, here's what you would be seeing as you drive along Beattie's Ford Road from the views. The upper left shows, you know, that that front door elevation will be about five feet, six feet below grade. The second one is the main entrance to the facility. As you see, this is in compliance or in alignment with our 2040 plan. This is located in an activity node, which calls for a mixture of uses, including multifamily. We have a number of items and policies that are supporting this from the 2040 plan. I'm sure we can all go through those on our own. And, going way back to 2005, we've got a smaller area plan here, the Beattie's Ford Road, Mount Holly, Huntersville Small Area Road Plan. Way back in 2005, they even predicted, here we are in the future, sometime in the future, that we should look at age-restricted multifamily. And here we are, you know, 15 years later, with a fine applicant looking to propose something like this. So, we've got small area plan, as well as the community plan. They're in support of this. With that being said, staff is in support of this project, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll just turn it over to the board.
Can you go back through that grade separation again, where, I mean, the parking looks like it's front engine on the road, at least those couple spaces there in the curve?
Sure.
It doesn't look like there's a grade separation right now when you look at it. It looks like it's pretty flat out there. Are they taking that down?
They, I can have, the applicant can speak a little bit more too, but we've seen the preliminary grading plan, and it will be below grade.
Okay.
So, we went conservative of five feet. As they finish the grades out for stormwater, it may increase. But, right now, it's showing at about five feet below grade. Plus, like I said, they're offering to have the, either our normal, standard parking lot screening with the row of evergreen shrubs, as well as trees, and they're offering a 20-foot buffer as well in front of that. So, there's a lot of extra plantings in there.
And then, is this a future road? I don't know if you have the rest of the site to the south?
I do. Hello? Okay. Hang on. There we go. I'll pull up, I do happen to have a slide. You could see how this site falls in to, and ties in with the existing and adjacent properties. To the south is the proposed Long Creek Retail that was approved back in 2008. The applicant, because this is a one-building, one-lot development, they are not required to dedicate or build the public street, but they are offering to reserve approximately 500 feet of public right-of-way, in case in the future the town or another agency comes in and wants to build a public street through this project, which would connect the Oak Grove Hill project to the Long Hill Creek Retail project.
So, were we considering that more of a driveway and less of a street? Because we, parking would be fronting on that, correct?
At this time, it's, correct, it would be a driveway. And if and when we needed to convert that to a public street, we would work with the applicant to make that happen.
Okay. That's it.
Could you talk a little bit about the sidewalks?
Sure. They are offering to build approximately 340 feet of a side path along Beattie's Ford Road. That is what the project would require.
Okay. And with the grading, we're talking about elderly people. Is, I mean, is there going to be handicap access?
All of the, good evening, all of, all of our driveways and sidewalks have ADA-accessible ramps.
Apologize for being late.
No problem, sir.
My DNA.
You understand, sir.
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Any update on whether NC DOT is going to require a TIA? I know the town is not.
The town is not going to require TA. I will defer to the applicant, but my understanding is they are not requiring a TIA.
Okay.
They will have traffic improvements along Beattie's Ford Road, but we're not sure what those are at this time.
Gotcha. Does staff any, have any perceived issues with the egress to this project being directly across the egress from Long Creek Elementary?
No, we would like them to align.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, not seeing many other questions. Oh, you've got questions?
Yeah, I got.
Sorry, I was just going to ask if the applicant's had a question, but please take it away, Frank.
And I may, and I may, I may ask a question that's already been asked for obvious reasons. If so, just answer me anyway.
Yes, sir.
First couple of questions are from, listening to the public hearing, some of the commissioners asked questions. I never heard the, never heard an answer from them. Commissioner Kidwell asked about other elevators.
I will defer to the applicant. I believe there's an elevator.
Okay, we'll wait for that.
There is an elevator?
Yes.
Yes, they will have an elevator.
Mr. Munger asked a question about the number of 55-over. Brian, if I remember right, I think you answered him, 800. And Commissioner Phillips asked a question about how many of those, this might not be the right term, but affordable, how, units, and you came back with plus or minus 135, is what I got.
That's where we're at.
Okay. So, then I have a question.
Sure.
How many are approved right now but not built?
Fantastic question. I'm working on that database in my spare time right now.
Okay.
I will get you that answer at some point.
All right. And Mr. Commissioner Boone asked, well, that, he, he got an answer for that. There's no support on site 24/7, is what I heard. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. There was also a question, I think he asked, about the average number of emergency calls that weren't, that aren't, non-maintenance on similar facilities in the Charlotte area.
I would have to defer to the applicant to see if they know their safety records.
Okay. And I guess the next question that he had asked, where the nearest Katz Bus Stop was. He was, the answer I heard was one mile, but, and I didn't get time to look it up myself. I suppose I could.
It's approximately one mile. We've reached out to Katz, and we're going to explore utilizing microtransit here in one of their new programs. We did speak with them. I got an email from them actually last night. They are, they're doing their forecasting for changing their Village Rider routes. This is not going to be on that program for about 18 to 24 months. Then they, when they revisit that, then they'll make a determination if it's needed.
Right.
But if not, the applicant has come up with a fantastic use of some local churches and charities to help folks get around who don't have cars.
Okay. And I, do you know the location of that bus stop that's within a mile right now?
No.
Okay. I think I can look that up online. I just didn't get a chance to do it. So, that's, that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for staff, or shall we bring the applicant up to answer at least Frank's questions? All right.
In terms of the question regarding normal service calls, that's not something I typically track back and get the property manager to get the answer this week for us.
I hate to interrupt, but if you would, just please put your name and address on the record, and get a little closer to the mic.
Jimmy Royster, Mosaic Development Group.
And that's fine. I was only asking a question because one of the commissioners asked the question, and I hadn't heard an answer. That's all, only reason I was asking that.
Okay. Is there any other questions that you have? Anybody else while I'm here?
Mr. Barnett's adjoining property, can you show me where, it sounds like you all have incorporated the fence?
Yeah, it's not on the plan yet, but I've told the engineers, Colton, Justin Stone, basically to add along his property, kind of juts into the L, so along our parking lot there, and then down toward Mount Holly, Huntersville. So, we create, so there wouldn't be that concern of light, or anybody trespassing through to cut through his property. So, and he's, he seemed comfortable with that. So, about six-foot privacy fence is what we were thinking.
So, you even have the details of the fence, six-foot privacy fences, which you're proposing?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much. Hearing no further questions, I would entertain a motion.
I have one. The Planning Board recommends approval of the proposed rezoning, a petition R21-16, 9102 Beattie's Ford Road, from rural to neighborhood residential, conditional district. The Planning Board finds that the rezoning, as outlined in Part 4 of the staff report, is consistent with Huntersville zoning ordinance 11.4.7D, 11.47E, Huntersville 24 Community Plan policies, bear with me, LU 2.1, LU 5.1, LU 6.1, LU 7.1, LU 8.1, LU 10.1, and T 3.1, and the Beattie's Ford Road and Mount Holly, Huntersville Small Area Plan. The Planning Board further recommends approval of the requested modifications. Modification one, reduction in number of off-street parking from 139 to 125 spaces. Modification two, side yard parking along Beattie's Ford Road with a 20-foot buffer to screen the parking lot from Beattie's Ford Road. This recommendation for approval is consistent, correction, this recommendation for approval is contingent upon the applicant successfully addressing outstanding staff comments and potential NC DOT comments. It is reasonable in the public interest to amend the zoning ordinance, because the rezoning is consistent with the envisioned uses and development pattern set forth in the 2040 community plan, and Beattie's Ford Road and Mount Holly, Huntersville Road Small Area Plan. That's it.
I'm, I'm fine. Second, the only thing I want to ask, Brian, is, you know, going forward, if that becomes a road, do we have to add anything now in this motion that holds them to that, or is that just something?
No, they will reserve that right of way on the plan, so we're in good shape.
All right, sounds good. I'd like to second.
Frank, any other comments?
No. I think, I think the motion says it, and the petition speaks for itself.
I may have an amendment. Going back to the six-foot privacy fence that's not currently on the plan.
Yes.
Are we comfortable that that will be incorporated, or should that also be incorporated into our motion?
We're in good shape.
Any other comments, discussion? All right, well, I'll just say it's exciting to see a need being filled in the community. So, with that, all those to support the motion? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Up next, our second item, petition R21-14 in regards to the recycling facility.
There we go. Good evening. I'll go ahead and enter the staff report into the record at this time. So, reviewing R21-14, North Mecklenburg Recycling Expansion. The applicant is Mecklenburg County. I'd like to just go over some high points and summarize the points that were discussed at the, the public meeting, the public hearing, so as to make the best use of everyone's time. But, the, the location is here near, in the southern intersection of Veerhop Drive in Statesville, near the intersection. You can see the site here. It's currently zoned special purpose, conditional district. You can see the existing facility there. So, what's proposed is an expansion. No rezoning, no changed use, per se, but as was discussed, an expansion of the active area from the rezoning that was approved back in 1989, I want to say. So, discuss some of the site considerations that staff noted and pointed out. The applicant is working on some changes. There is an updated plan forthcoming. As was said, there wasn't enough time between the public hearing and this meeting tonight to get the plan in, get them reviewed, and get them on the staff report. So, they're going to be working on those changes. Two of the changes that we know that we're committed to come in is an updated tree survey, and then also an added note on the plan that was in your staff report, to say that the county agrees to work with us for the town greenway that runs through the subject property. So, staff recommends approval, and does reference the considerations to make changes, and some of those are committed to by the applicant. So, staff supports the application. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. And the applicant is here. I always forget to say that.
Just to, just to make sure I understand it correctly, can we tell what's expanding from, is it, it's not the actual lot, but it's the, like, paved area, or?
Yes. Essentially, so, this, this slide here shows the area that's expanded. So, if you, you get rid of the, the yellow area, that was the previous rezoning. And you can see that, I think I have that as well. Well, there it is. So, inside, inside the fenced area where it points out the security fence, that was the active area. And so, the expansion pushes it out to the north and to the south.
That little yellow corner, that's part of it as well? It's just not attached to the rest of the?
Yes. That little area is used now currently, I understand it, as storage. That was not on the, the previous plan. So, I pointed that out as a change from the previous approval. And it's labeled as storage, so not a functioning recycling area, but storage. So, it would stay as it currently is.
Okay, thanks. And I think some of the public comments or hearing mentioned concern for odor, I guess. But, with this not being a, I don't want to make light of their concerns, but with it not being a typical garbage disposal, is odor a factor at that facility?
Well, from a staff situation, not really. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance to, to discuss that. Now, certainly, it is from a standpoint of, well, what's the situation? And then, the applicant has gone through and made changes to the plan in regard to noise walls, and, and changing things for the, the neighbors to accommodate some of their requests. Specifically for smells, again, I have not seen any changes on the plan that address smell. So, that would be something that the board, and certainly the town board, could address with the applicant. But, from a zoning perspective, the, the ordinance requirements are being met. It allows this kind of use. It's not, it's not changing for this rezoning. Again, it's not changing what's already taking place on the site, just expanding the area in which whatever's already happening is going to happen. So, that's kind of where we stand.
So, this already is super crowded. I'm assuming you guys are adding more facilities, so you're expecting more people to come, or same amount of people are still going to be there. Okay, you're just making more space because it's getting tight out there. Yeah. I just know the traffic out there is, you know, bad on Saturdays, and you guys do a good job of getting a police officer out there, but just wanted to make sure.
So, and that's, that's a, that's a good point, and that's one of the things that would change with the updated plan. You know, staff is recommending that rear connection to Veerhop. That's a consideration that was discussed. But, in lieu of that, what the county would like to do, and would certainly be helpful, is adding turn lanes on Statesville Road for that access. So, what they've also done in the past, which has assisted in the stacking situation, you'll see the, the small guardhouse towards Statesville Road has been replaced, and there's a new wayhouse further back into the site. So, that's allowed more cars to come in and keep going to the back to allow more functionality. That, along with the turn lanes, would again increase that capacity. So, therefore, staff understands that if that's the route that the county wants to go, that's likely to be beneficial, especially in the short term.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Are you satisfied with the, I know the tree survey is not done yet, but I heard the applicant tell the board that he was, that they were going, the applicant was going to complete that to your, to the Planning Department's satisfaction?
Yes, sir.
Then you'll, you'll do a tree mitigation from that?
That's, that's, that's right. I doubt mitigation will be needed. I, I'm pretty confident that they're going to meet it, but yes, we're going to get an updated tree survey that identifies all the species, and then we'll, we'll have a complete representation of conformance.
All right. My second question or comment is, I have some concern about the, could you put that back up, about the, the statement about the greenway? You had it up a moment ago? There. The applicant equals Mecklenburg County?
That's correct.
All right. Mecklenburg County is the primary builder of greenways in this county. The city really is not a greenway builder. We contribute money, seed money, but usually for design and other items. So, I have some concern that we're signing away a county responsibility and putting it on the town. So, I don't have a problem with the piece about, that's normal even in development, that you may or may not know exactly. Generally, the greenway will go along the creek, and that's fine. You don't know until you get out there and do the design exactly where it's going to go. So, that, that piece is fine. It's just that the responsibility for construction or maintenance of greenway trail are any costs relating there to. I have some concern that we're putting that burden on the town of Huntersville.
Sure. And that, and I appreciate that, but I think staff is comfortable with that for, for a couple of reasons. The county, for sure, the, the town greenway plans and the Mecklenburg County greenway plans, a lot of time, they overlap. So, there's, there's a joint process to making those greenways come to fruition. However, it's not However, it's not the case 100%. For instance, the greenway that was just built here from the library over east to 115 was completely built by the town. That was on the town's plan, that was what the town wanted, and we built it. So what's currently in the books now, going through this property, is a town greenway. So it would be a similar situation in application. So if the town, the county doesn't have plans to go through this property, their greenway is a lot further to the north. So if the town wants a greenway through here, through the creek, south of CPCC, through the park, over to 115, well, it's really going to be a town constructing greenway.
That, with that said, then I would say that Park and Rec and the Greenway Commission needs to provide a list of all these, all the greenways that the county are not going to build so that we can estimate the cost and either agree to build those or put them into the capital improvement program.
Yeah, I can, yeah, certainly ask staff to make that comparison.
And I'd like that to be put in the record. Tracy.
Any other questions?
I have one. Does staff have any concerns with the TIA being two and a half years old?
The TIA? I don't recollect a TIA being required. The TIA is not required for this use. The TIA is based on square footage, and there is no expansion of square footage for what's allowed currently and what was already vested, so no TIA would be required. Did I say something different?
I'll try and find where I got that from.
Okay.
All right, does the applicant have anything to say or you guys good? Okay, it's up to you.
Good evening, Planning Board members. I'm Jeff Smithberger. I'm the Director of Solid Waste for Mecklenburg County, and it's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. This is a project that we have been working on for several years. It's part of Mecklenburg County's strategic plan to upgrade all of our full-service facilities. This will be the first one that we undertake. Our other facilities that we have are at Pence Road, at Foxhole Landfill Facility down off Route 521, and our Compost Central Facility on Valleydale Road. I guess we have a quick presentation, and if I can figure out how to run this, Brad.
Right, there you go.
You've seen this before. This is the outline of the existing facility, and I'll run through this very quickly, but if you have questions, let me know. We have a three-phased expansion process for this facility. As you can imagine, we plan to continue to operate and accept materials in as we do the expansion. We've shown it in two different phases. Right now, we have done Phase One, which is providing additional facilities and infrastructure for our staff that are ADA compliant. We're expanding into Area Two to provide a noise wall and an acceptance area where our Board of County Commissioners has asked me to try to do more recycling at our facilities. And this will be the methodology that we utilize at all of our centers to try to recycle more and have less waste reduction that goes to landfills. We've also committed to the community that we will build a noise wall and a berm behind it so that when they look from their homes, they will see green vegetation and not the noise wall. As you can see, we have a line of sight distance of over 500 feet, but the median area is about 425 feet of buffer that we have between our facility and neighboring homes. Very similar, looking at the other end of the process, continues on with the noise wall and the canopy structure area that we have. This is a picture of the office facility that we have built. We want to build facility and structures that are very similar looking to what you would expect at a park because we want people to be happy when they come to use our facilities and continue on with their waste reduction activities. This is a picture of our full-service facility that we have at our Valleydale Road site. You can see in the background that there is a large canopy area, and under that canopy area is where we store, sort, and move out recyclable materials, including the things like electronic materials and books, magazines, shredded newspaper, shredded paper, and free on appliances. We also stack televisions. We get a lot of televisions anywhere our program. Televisions are not allowed to be thrown away in landfills in the state of North Carolina, and we recycle many tons of TVs each and every week from our facilities. We average hauling about four tractor-trailer loads from all of our centers every week from our facilities. This is a word slide, and I'm not going to try to read everything, but, you know, this Northmeck facility is part of our proposed future improvements that we have for all of our centers. We'll be significantly expanding other centers, which I'm not going to elaborate about tonight unless you want me to, but at our Hickory Grove facility, we have a 10-acre expansion that we're planning there. And we have a new facility in Steel Creek that's also about 11 acres that we're going to be building and constructing, hopefully have open in FY '24. Updates since the town hearing? I think Brad went over these to talk about the master planning and the greenway trails. We're the county. We're not a private business enterprise. If you want changes at this facility, these are things that we work with the community on an ongoing basis. We want to be a good neighbor. We are the only solid waste organization in the state of North Carolina that has an environmental management system with state approval. That means that we monitor the things that we do, and we have external parties that come in and provide audits to make sure that we're operating at the highest levels and standards that we can for all of our facilities. And we actively research the equipments and processes and the things that we do to try to maximize our commitment to waste reduction for this community. I think that was it. If you all have any questions, either tonight or later on, my staff and I are glad to answer, but we're happy to have this process underway and have this facility be a showcase for our entire operation. Thank you very much. That concludes my remarks.
Great, thank you so much for that. Anyone have questions for him? Actually, Jeff, would you? Jeff, we've got some questions if you don't mind.
Sorry, I read that you would be recycling new items. What are those going to be?
We'll probably recycle things like shredded paper that we don't recycle now. We've also looked into book recycling, hard book recycling. We'll probably also look at collection of food wastes here. So we're trying to expand the horizon of things that are not recyclable necessarily curbside, but are recyclable if people bring those items to us.
And then the other question I had is, are you going to be using any renewable energy sources?
We are looking actively at placing renewable energy at the top of this facility, which would be likely solar generation. At this point, for us, it would likely be for lights. But yes, Mecklenburg County is committed to work on renewable energy portfolios, whether it's physically installed on our facilities or buying renewable energy credits where those credits are available. We are looking actively at renewable energy at all of our solid waste centers, including some of our closed landfills for photovoltaic applications.
As far as that road potential connectivity, what's your concerns or objections? I'm not saying it's good or bad. I mean, in regards to traffic, it seems like it might assist with that, but what are the reasons for not entertaining?
Are you talking about the rear access road?
Yes.
Right now, that really messes up traffic flow for us because of the way that our site is designed. It's designed to have people come in, pass through scales, or go over to what we call our express line area. If we have people also coming in from the back, we have to completely redesign. For us, it's one way or the other. We can't have two separate exits and entrance. We're not like a typical big box store where you can have people come in, and they come in multiple different doors. We have to because of the way that traffic flows with vehicles, people with trailers and trucks and stuff. We want to make sure that our traffic flows in a direction and then comes back and goes back out that way. Now, we have committed to add sidewalks and add turning lanes on Statesville Road, and we believe that that's the best methodology for our facility to operate safely and efficiently.
My biggest concern, I don't have a problem with the facility. I use this facility all the time. The question about odor, I was out there today. There is an odor. It was localized near the mulch. To me, it smelled like, you know what cedar mulch smells like? That strong odor? That's what it was. But I went up to where the CDI was, I talked to those people. They really never smell anything, and the wind was blowing from the south to the north right across. I couldn't smell it up in the parking lot where the trucks are. That's not to say that the residents of Plum Creek don't smell it. So, and that's one of my big concerns is accommodating citizens, and I don't think it matters what year those buildings were built, whether they were built 10 years after this facility was put in or 10 years before, they shouldn't have to suffer because of this facility. And from what I see in here, Mecklenburg County is committed to mitigating everything they can mitigate to prohibit that. So I guess a question, I heard you and Commissioner Boone asked some questions at the meetings about the grinders. I heard what you said about using the slow grinder as often as you could, but sometimes you've got to use the other one. There was concern about noise before seven because of, I guess, trucks positioning themselves to start the day's work, probably the backup noise of not only the trucks, but whatever. So I guess my question then for that is, when do you grind? Is there a set time for that day, week, or does it just happen when it happens?
It happens when it happens, but generally, we grind every two weeks at that facility. And when we grind, we start generally after 8:00 in the morning, and we stop around 2:00 in the afternoon. And the reason why we have those hours is because we have a mobile grinding crew. And so that mobile grinding crew mobilizes at our Valleydale Road facility. They physically start work at 7:00 AM. By the time they get to Northmeck, it's after 8:00. They make sure that the machine's in good shape, so it's generally, you know, between the hours of 8:00 and 2:00 PM, and that's Monday through Friday because our crews do not do grinding on Saturdays or weekends unless there is an upset or an emergency condition where there's been an ice storm or some reason where there's a problem in our community. Now, I want to touch on the question you asked about odor. We have a large facility. It's over 60 acres, and it's our Compost Central Facility, and it takes about six times more mulch and grinding material than this facility would. We have deployed an odor mitigation system at that site because some of the neighbors didn't like the smell of the mulch and the leaves that we get. And one of the things that typically happens in my program is leaves smell differently than regular wood mulch. And so typically, what happens is that in the fall of the year, around November, December, and January, the leaves come in, leaves are more acidic, they make the mulch product smell differently. And so we run an odor mitigation system that works to combat and deflect any of those smells. We have committed to the residents up here that we will also put one of those things in because while it is not a zoning issue, it then becomes back that we have a solid waste permit, and I have to answer to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality and our own air quality group that we have in Mecklenburg County. So there are others that are ensuring that our facility is compliant with rules and regulations that may not be in your zoning or ordinance rules.
If someone asked me today, asked the question that had heard that from the public hearing, odor mitigation, but what is odor mitigation?
We use a proprietary system from a company called Bayer Scientific, and if you'd like to come out and look at it at our Compost Central Facility, it's easier to show than it is to describe, but it uses a system that deploys a material that is basically like an air freshener, except it targets sulfur compounds, and it reduces those sulfur compounds into something that's no longer smellable.
So the analogy is it's industrial Fabreeze.
I think that has a trademark, so I better not touch that one.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, looking at you guys' overall plan. So it looks like you guys have two existing ponds, right? So I assume all the storm drainage from the site goes to those two ponds?
Existing storm drainage?
Right, yeah.
We'll be adding another.
And you're adding, I want to know, that eventually gets to the creek, right? And is there anything in between where it goes down in the catch basin, drop inlet, whatever, into that pond? Do you have filters before it gets to the creek?
We have biofilters right now that we utilize, and so, yeah, it passes through both earth and sand and other things before it gets out.
Yeah, in the BMP, just earth and sand before it gets to the creek. Okay.
So that was one of my questions, but I saw in the diagram, I missed it before. You have a proposed or another BMP that you're putting in that takes care of your impervious area and plus the rainwater. Do you know what creek that drains into? The main creek, knowing the main creek that runs under and down Highway 21, that's Torrance Creek. But there's the, I don't know if it's called Plum Creek or not, maybe that's where it comes from.
Clark Creek?
Well, there's a creek that starts over by 115 where the headwaters are, and it's a tributary of Torrance, and it runs on the south side of the facility, and then it connects to Torrance Creek. Do you know which one of those creeks that this, that the water goes into?
I do not, but I can, you know, ask my engineer in the back if he remembers. I'd have to look at a plan to see.
All right. I guess one of the reasons I asked, I mean, I heard it talked about the other, I know what a stonefly is because I do a little bit of trout fishing, mayflies and that, but there's something about that creek and stoneflies?
Not that creek. It is a different creek.
Okay.
It is a nearby creek, but it is upgradient from where our site is, and so we will never drain to that creek. We had that question brought up about two years ago, and that was thoroughly researched by both Mecklenburg County Stormwater Staff and Huntersville folks. Thank you.
Apparently, the stonefly has very good attorneys. Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I can make a motion if no one else has one.
Please take it away, Jeff.
All right. In considering the proposed rezoning application, R-21-14 North Mecklenburg Recycling Center Expansion, the Planning Board recommends approval based on the plan being consistent with the Huntersville 2040 Community Plan Policies LU 1.1, LU 5.1, and LU 11.1. We're asking the applicant to update the plan with the complete, a completed tree survey showing conformance to the tree save requirements. We're also requesting that they add the already agreed-upon footnote into the plan regarding future greenway location. It is reasonable and in the public interest to approve the rezoning plan because the center is an essential service for residents in this part of the county, also because the applicant has partnered with the nearby community of Plum Creek to address their concerns and also go on record to address potential future concerns as it relates to smell coming from the facility, and because the project will add turn lanes on Statesville Road.
Do we have a second? Second. Jeff, any other comments?
None.
Scott?
No, just simply, I think this is one of these necessary evils. I don't think anybody would necessarily want this use next to them, but they're established use there. They're a benefit to the community, and I do find some comfort in the fact that it is being operated by Mecklenburg County and a government versus a private industry. So if we do have future problems with smell, noise, or whatever else, I think I'll be as good of a corporate citizen as anyone.
You're here? Here, here.
The only thing I, is sometimes we forget, this isn't your typical applicant. This is the county, and whatever they spend out there is coming out of our pocket. So we have a double interest.
I hope they're not going to ask for a check tonight. All right. Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right. Valid motion on the floor. It's been seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Well, with that, we have no other business. Does anyone, we're kind of out earlier than usual, any items for the good? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thanks, everybody. Go home.